At West Tennessee Bank, we provide all the financial tools you'll ever need to manage your money more effectively, helping you stretch each dollar, making it go farther, adding value to every purchase. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal housing lender, member FDIC.
There's a poor presence, we're going to proceed with the meeting. First thing that's going to be here, I would like to ask you is we have a motion to approve the agenda. Second, a motion, second, approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and it is approved. First thing we'll be dealing with is our consent agenda. I would have a motion, second, approve the consent agenda. We need a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and it is approved. The next thing on here is going to be delegation, and I think this time we do have a delegation from the Beta Club, is that correct, Mr. Kildare?
Yes, sir, it is correct.
All right, would you like to introduce?
Well, I'll just introduce one of the Beta Club sponsors, Ms. Seiya Hunt.
Thank you, sweet Lord, and music is a part of the world. Yes, and thank you, Mr. Hunt, for the special mention and the courtesy. This time we need a little bit of help with the bits, something like this. Tonight I have a lot to present to you, our Beta delegates have been representing the state of Tennessee. We have Kelly Griffin, she's going to be representing the state of Tennessee, the state Beta Secretary. We plan on traveling to Oklahoma City in June, and again, they're here to showcase what they've done. I also have two members of the robotics team, Bradley and Peyton. Bradley Holloway and Peyton Anderson are going to represent Chester County with their project, their winning project at the state level. So, these are the people who have qualified to go. We have two more members of the robotics team, and then there will be Sarah Porter, who qualified because she went to the Beta Leadership Conference and her work there. I would like at this time, then we give you just a little snippet or showcase of what they can do, and then I'll let you inform yourselves to these five ladies and gentlemen's, and then I will talk to you, I request, please.
I'm welcome. I'll come back to it. Bobby, can we, like she said, I'll be representing Tennessee as State Secretary. And this all started kind of as a joke with Mr. Lewis at last year's national conference in Tybee, Iowa, Georgia. And he joked, he was like, "Big Room's going to sweep the competition away at Nationals." And I was like, "Ha ha, very funny," because I'm not a good public speaker, but... So, when he passed, it really pushed me to run and go for it, because, you know, step outside of your comfort zone and get out there. So, I made him do it. But I remember walking up on stage, and all I could see was like, people. And I was like, "Ooh." And it really pushed me to get out of my comfort zone and show me something that I've never seen before, and I just wish I could do that at Nationals too, because I know he needed it.
Peyton Anderson. Two of our other members, Bricks Holmes and Rod Kim, were unable to appear tonight, but we're the robotics team. I'd like to thank you guys for having us again. We saw you guys a couple times last year. You guys remember last year, we entered in a Rubik's Cube solved robot into the state in national level competitions. And so, this next year, we're looking back to try and decide what we wanted to build and enter the competition this year. We looked at things that we liked about our project from the previous year's competition. And the things we came up with is that we liked that it was different from other entries because it had a lot of judge interaction. We let the judge actually scramble the Rubik's Cube and place it in, so they got to be involved in the process. And we liked that it wasn't just so serious, and they were able to have some fun. And our food. So, this year, keeping with the theme of the public game, we created a robot that plays tic-tac-toe. And so, the player will make the first move, and then has a scanner that comes and reads the exact block you put it in, and from there, it comes up with the best algorithm path to beat you. We programmed it with three different difficulties. Easy, which is where it places it randomly on the board with no meaning or no path or whatever.
More for against the play.
Yeah. Medium, there's one way we left for you to be able to beat the machine. And hard, we've had never anybody beat it, don't. You can tie, you can lose, but we're ready to play.
Our theme was reduced, reuse, refine. And so, the way that we tied ours in, we had a bridge, and then this can work out through the grant. And we have a filament for that 3D printer that is called Biofilament.
Biofilament.
And it is a recycled filament. And so, all of our little pieces in the halls we would use, had your marker, were recycled. But I think, we appreciate you guys for bringing us coming in for tonight's outing. And we'd really love to go to Nationals. Thank you, thank you.
Again, we want to thank you for your contribution. Last year, it was very expensive for us to travel. Last year, we took less than we shared couches and plates we did. This year, we have a smaller group in Lexington who's flying, so they block off plane tickets and rooms for us, which are from the expected reimbursement. Our deadline to file is May 1st, so that's why we need your approval if we can to do any fundraisers that we need. Right now, I found this says best, if everybody wanted those, budget. Last year, our cost, travel expenses, or room, board, no food, I don't think, and last year was provided for you was at Nationals. We also have to register with the National Beta. We also will need travel back and forth from the airport, which would include Uber. I know the airline tickets and hotel, if my math's correct, I'll hear the food, I only estimated. The convention fees have already been paid, and the Uber fares, it just says there per minute. So, if you're stuck in traffic, that is hard for me to estimate. I don't know where it would be, about 10 miles from airport to the convention center. And again, total cost estimated for these six students and two sponsors would be $7,830 as best that I can be. Again, the attendance, number of attendees is less this year, and the location span compared to Oklahoma City, so a little difference. But in hotel and convention centers, they tend to have a catch of audience, and therefore drives the prices up just a tad more. So, we would appreciate any offerings that you could give to us, and then we request that we be allowed to raise any money since the deadlines already passed. So, right now, we're looking at maybe car washes, or bake sales, or whatever we can do to raise the money that we need to keep the students from having to pay for all of the trip themselves. Right now, they've made a $250 deposit, which has helped us get things rolling, but as you can see, the cost per person on this would be a little stretch for them. The seniors trying to get to college, et cetera. So, I also got to commend Presley Connor. She's at the Sage for us, and I think she definitely encouraged us to realize that we have a lot of potential and to use as much potential as we can. My students motivate me a lot to be a better teacher. I appreciate that so much. Thank you, sweet Lord.
How much has made a raised this far?
Well, again, we have not raised any money, that's all, other than their $250. They pay for their convention. When you go to state convention, they pay that.
Well, I was, the reason why I ask is I was at the county commission meeting where they provided $1,000.
They did? Okay. As far as I know, that's it.
The total cost?
The city, the city.
Yeah.
We don't know where it's going in.
Are you planning to do the same there?
I think so.
You could do that.
Me too.
Because the city usually in places like this will match.
What county did? Okay. So, who did that?
Our main group, the church, gave some money, I think.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of that. I don't know very much that was.
You gave it to the board? Yeah, I think so.
How much was that?
Couple hundred or something.
And again, I'm not aware of any other, because I, we've not, as sponsors, we've not solicited anything we need to do, which all the wills were given to us, we didn't turn it down, so.
You know, I'd say any reasonable fundraiser, they do it, and go to the city, definitely, and then get back with us in our remaining idea.
We would like to request, you know, we'd love for you to make what you did last year, if that's a possibility. Again, if it's not, we certainly understand that, that that's what we would be up for.
Sure. How much do we have to ask about?
Again, we don't, now, if I'm not mistaken, this is the total ticket that you would need, the 7840?
We think, as best as I can. Maybe a little more, maybe a little. I don't expect it will be any less. I'm sure there's some things that...
But does the gift from the county and what you have meet your May deadlines, or you do have time to come back to May and see where you're at?
That's what we're hoping, yes. We hope they do.
It would be surprising to justify in May, what's left, if we could cover that.
Right. The 20, we know the 6D for 100, we're simply reimbursing Lexington, so as long as they let us, until they send us a mail, we'll write on their coattails.
Write on their coattails.
Help finance it.
Yes.
We've got a May 23 meeting.
Okay. So, we maybe could, you need us to come back at that time?
Are you going to have enough money to meet the May?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Can you meet?
If you commit to May, if you have enough to commit to that, then you come back, we can see where we're at to finish you up.
After you've had the opportunity to figure your fundraiser.
I'm not certain what Lexington, I mean, they're holding flights and holding rooms for us, so, but when they have to pay, I'm sure they're going to be looking at us to pay. The deadline to register for national convention is May 1st, so I'm sure we'll have to make the deposits with the hotel, and we'll have to pay for those airline tickets. They will not, you know, they're holding them for us, but they haven't, no, they've not released any money yet, so. I don't know that the money that the city and the church has donated, I don't know that they will...
Just mostly station.
Yeah, I mean, if y'all were looking at maybe money, I think we need to make that decision tonight, because it will have to go to the county commission as well. So, it'll have to go to both, both boards.
What's management did last year? But if they go to the city and give a thousand?
Well, then they're going to have to have a bunch of fundraisers, which we're against fundraising all the time.
That's right.
Correct.
You can carry over a little money.
They are a lot of work, but we're, we're always going to learn to do whatever in the last.
It's just going to have to go through a vote. It'll have to go through a vote, so there's a 20th meeting the second Monday in May, so before we can spend those funds, if y'all are going to do that tonight, you have to do it. We have to approve the amendment tonight, and then it will have to be approved at the county commission as well.
Is it possible to approve up to $5,000? Or if you raise, say, $3,000, or raise?
You still going to say it earlier?
It's not possible to do that at convention. It'll be a dollar amount.
The last one, the motion, the $5,000, you'll have a second. We have motion, second, that and the other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, great.
Is that approval of the amendment as well, or just approval of their request?
I'm sorry.
Is that approval of the amendment, then their request?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Congratulations, guys. We're really proud of all of you. Thank you for representing Chester County.
Just win it all, and it makes it all worth it.
That's right. That's a small prize.
Small prize, you did a lot of time on it.
Yes, thank y'all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Next thing is going to be our celebration, and I'm going to let you start that.
Give them a chance to exit, since they got their business done.
Why do you know?
The first celebration tonight is going to be having a conversation with Heather Griffin and the coordinator of school health and the health council. Are there any students representing?
We told them they couldn't come tonight.
Okay. Well, if you, if you noticed, and I had talked to Heather back in the winter about doing the spotlight, because, again, the thing that Ms. Heather Griffin and Amy Eads and those students who serve on the health committee or council are able to do is they do a lot of good work. It's not necessarily the work that addresses maybe an academic need or a school issue, but they do represent some opportunities for these kids to build good, strong leadership skills. They do focus on the attention of meeting the needs of our staff, even, because there's appreciation, incentives that they're working on for staff to help encourage them as they continue to do their work, to show that students are also very respectful and very supportive of their work. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time talking, but I also want to just make mention, and that was the reason why I did this in April, since we have this beautiful weather, to consider going outside, that if you notice on the walk behind the sports place, you have some new outdoor equipment that has been purchased, paid for, met all the needs that we had financially through grants, and a lot of community stakeholder support and encouragement. And just wanted to say that as now the spring weather hopefully will give us the opportunity that's utilized, or can be utilized, not by just students, that can be anybody. So, we wanted to make sure that now the weather and the spring can become more conducive for people to go outside and enjoy, that that is open to all. So, thank you, James. Thank you, Ms. Tett. I'm sorry. About the recognition that we'll get through the paper about this, but if you would, Heather, come on ahead and share some more information. Amy, you going to be her founder?
I will. Y'all should know this.
Turn it on.
So, we weren't, we wanted to get the kids to come tonight, but with kind of so much other stuff going on, we're hoping that maybe the board might consider letting them come and talk to you themselves in May. The way it turns out, between what Amy and I do, in combination of all that the students do, we would have been here like an hour, and none of us wanted to do that on a Thursday night when we don't have work tomorrow, right? So, we decided to split it up, and we really wanted to get the information out there about the playground and what's new and what's happening, so maybe, hopefully, the board will consider letting the kids come next month. I can't remember who's first. So, just to, just to kind of paint a picture, if you're a numbers person, Amy and I work together in coordinate school health and family resource. I direct school health, she directs family resource, and we serve as each other's assistants. Together, just this year, we have screened 984 students. That is vision, hearing, height, weight, blood pressure. We do count on nurses to help us some, which is, we don't like to do that, because we don't like to take them out of their daily duties. At some of the schools, we have some physical education teachers that help us, but for the most part, it's Amy, and sometimes when I can be there, it's me and Amy. Amy, you want to tell them about your assistants?
So, through family resource, and with the help of a lot of other people, our assistants this year, and that students and families, 374, and that's things like food, clothing, school supplies, and that's including like our back-to-school bash kids, who we did the clothing exchange, we count those, and our food bank on weekends, and so, and there's a lot of needs out there. And those aren't repeat numbers either, so, you know, if you're 100, well, 90 something of those kids, or every single weekend, they're getting food. So, that's something that we do every month. The reason we wanted to put numbers here is because the dollars are what's important to a lot of people. It may not necessarily be important to everybody, but, I mean, it all comes down to time and money with anything. So, $156,400 is how much our programs have brought into Chester County, and not one, not $1, not one cent came from tax money or schoolwork money. So, because we do these screenings, because our schools are awesome and they work with us, we get $90,000 to do school health. Amy gets $29,000 to do family resource. We've written extra grants, and we'll talk about some of those here in just a minute. And because we're, our system is just awesome, and because everybody is always so, I don't know, just willing to go, everybody just has such great enthusiasm and excitement that sometimes, like what I'm going to tell you about later in just a few minutes, we don't even have to apply for the grant. People will call us and say, "Hey, y'all did really great with this. Would you like $20,000?" And we're just like, "Yeah." And he says, "No." We're like, "Short, but it's okay. We can take it." So, those things. Okay, so, we know, must be y'all know kind of what we do on a normal basis, because y'all see us all the time, so we thought we'd just kind of highlight what we've done this year as far as the new programs that we've tried. And our first one, we talked about it a little bit already, is our food program, and we send those home every weekend. This year, we've packed up to 115. It usually hovers around 100 kids, the bags go home on the weekends, and so, that's our first picture, some of our kids helping us pack the bags to go home. And of course, Ms. Missy's here, she helps us pass them out at East Chester. It takes a village to do it. We partner with a lot of people to do that. Dimpin' activities we've had, some of our outreach, we did a donuts with dads at West Chester, and it was breakfast in the morning, daddies came and ate breakfast with the little kids, and of course, not every child has a father in the home, and so, the sheriff's department came, the police department came, some of our local pastors came, and sat in with our children who didn't have their dads there with them, and so, everybody seemed to just really love it, so we hope we can continue that. This other picture, here's some of our student health council kids, and we did an event at the high school, we called it "Children's selfie" to school, because our attendance incentive was through the high school this year, and so, there's our kids taking pictures with the kids as they came to school, because attendance is such an important thing to learn, the importance of when you're young, carries over into your job when you get older. But also, we gave out prizes throughout the year for those with perfect attendance, improved attendance, good attendance, and we had three local banks donate $300 for each trimester, and so, we were able to do some cash prizes and all that happens, because it's always crazy, but amazing. And so, once again, our community partners are supporting us in what we do.
Did you say there was 100 students per weekend?
About. Yeah. And anytime y'all want to come back with us, if you'll let us know. It's a lot of fun. It's a lot of fun. I'm sorry. We also partnered with West Tennessee Healthcare to do straight talk for some guys at our office, and Brother Tracy Snyder did that for us, he led that, and so that was some of our father-son outreach. We had about 10 kids and their daddies come, and I think they learned a lot, had a good time. And we also did a Saturday, that was our first annual Family Slam Jam, and it was just a fun time for families to come out. We had a fun basketball game, and Tommy Kirk did a great job being our referee and our coach, and we ran relay races, and the little kids just had a great time with their dads and some moms, but it was just a fun day to get together. We're about families getting together and spending time together and getting away from, you know, sitting on your phones, or just, just being together and strengthening our family bonds. Those are some of our new things, do family resource this year. So, back to the money, the $156,000. The things Amy's been telling you about, that's where the money goes. It pays our salaries and insurance and things like that, it helps pay for contracted workers we use on and off. But it also, this is the playground that is behind the tennis courts, and the reason, we started talking to the kids, we talked to Mr. Phelps at the middle school, and it's been a concern there for a while, that there's not a playground, and there's nowhere to put a playground at the middle school. And of course, you don't want those kids over on East Chester playground, and anyway. So, when I talked to Mr. Kildare, he said, "Yes, we could utilize that area." And I remember when schools, when we had our in-service beginning this school year, Mr. Dwight and Mr. Glenn Mailer were sitting there, and I took them over pictures, y'all remember that? I took them over pictures of different playground equipment, and I said, "What do y'all think about this?" And so, that's something that I always think about when that gets out there, is that, you know, I'm glad he got to be a part of that, he got to see that. So, anyway, building on the money, so after we got this installed, and we took pictures, and we did our reports and our follow-up, and thank you Stacy Keen, because she was a lifesaver, I was completely lost in the whole process, and she was like, "It's okay." But we did such a good job that the company and the state that we went, the department through the state that we went through, actually called and said, "Hey, well, we have $20,000." I guess it was like unclaimed and grant monies, and "Would you like to put in another piece of equipment?" So, yeah. So, we're fixing to start adding on. So, when you see things out there happening, if y'all would, take a picture, tweet it out, share it, make sure, because for some reason, people don't understand that that's community use. Somebody had made a comment on the Gene Record Facebook page that, "Oh, I didn't know that we could play on that." Yes, please, go play it. Play it on this week. Oh, yeah. So, this is a new project that we're working on. I don't know if y'all driven by the barn or the shop behind Eagles Edge lately, but Amy and I have been working with Coach Eads, and Todd's been doing some work on the doors. The picture on the left is the before, and then Amy and I got to hold that pressure washer this week. And the picture on the right is the after, and man, are we excited. So, we may be sore, can't hold our arms up without our shoulders, but we're going to get out there again, because it looks so much better. So, what I've done is a goal for coordinate school health next year is to write a healthy, sustainable living goal, and that is to include for all students, preferably 4th through 12th grade, a student mentor program, so that they learn about soil sustainability, gardening, where food comes from, how to prepare it, how to wash it, how to eat it. So, we're really excited about using part of that building as a greenhouse, and we will apply for some money through there. We think we may be able to get about $10,000 from the Department of Agriculture to help us. We're very excited. We've had a lot of input, we have a great advisory committee, which Dr. Catlett is on, we have several. So, again, if you see some action going on out there, share it, let people know, let your kids know, and if you want to help us with it, we would definitely take that out too. Okay. Last two new things we want to share with you, in case you don't know yet, Amy, you want to talk about? I will. So, I'm going to talk about outreach Chester County, and at the, in the fall, we had a business, just contact us on what can we do to help. And so, just in some talking, they donated $1,000, and said, "Do with it what you want to," because our funds being our grant and state funds, we are, you know, you're pretty tied to what you can do, and so, they wanted them to do what they could to help the community. So, they donated that, donated that, and we bought some Christmas gifts for some families, some bikes and stuff that you usually, I mean, we can do some, but, you know, but they got some good stuff for those couple families. And after we presented at our Christmas meeting, another business came and said, "Hey, we want to give too." And so, now we've got a little nest egg through the bank, and we have a committee there that we run all of our purchases through, and so, that's just kind of, that's outside sort of our job, but, you know, it is a blessing to have a community that we can all work together, and even outside of our school walls, we're all just trying to do the best for everybody, and so, that's just where we live, and we're very, very blessed with that. The next one is the Barnabas Project, and we want you guys to know about this as board members, so in case you, anybody asks you about it, you don't seem completely lost and confused about, "Why did Heather have this account at Chester County Bank?" That was outreach Chester County. Another thing that we have is the Barnabas Project, and I have Mr. Shane to thank for finally naming it. Could not think of a name to put on it, and Barnabas is absolutely perfect, it's very fitting. So, Barnabas Project, if you're a teacher, or if you want to tell a teacher, if they have an aid, they have a link, and if they don't have it, email us, and we will send it to them. And it's a place, it's a Google form, where they can go in and say, "I need pencils, I need Kleenex, I need Clorox wipes, I need hand sanitizer, I need a backpack for a kid, I need you to pray for my kids for testing this week, I need you to pray for me." You can put just about anything you want to in there, and then Amy and I, and all of the participating churches have access to what ends up being the Google spreadsheet, so they can see what teacher, what school asked for what. so they can see what teacher, what school asked for what, whatever they requested. And once that need is met, they can highlight it, and everybody, we just all go check it, and it's a live document all the time, so if there is a need, then it's there, and it's very easy, and I know, this came about because teachers were getting, I forgot how I told this story, it was just kind of funny, and I know I need to be quiet, but this is really funny. So, there were canned goods collected by a certain high school group that were brought to us, well, we don't put those kind of canned goods in our weekend food bag, so we took them to Gleaners, and then Gleaners ended up calling us back to come get 'em, because they thought we needed 'em. Like, nobody wanted 'em. So, all these kids were taking up, you know, bringing cans to school, or bringing whatever to school, and the teachers don't need 'em. And the, the teacher said, "We need whatever," or Gleaners House said, "We need this," and so, we were like, "Okay, we've got to be a fix to this." And so, we put on this project. So, now we hope that the needs are being met properly, and everybody's getting what they need to get. Thank you. All our children's rights that we passed out, that does not close schools. Sure. And I'm sorry for teachers. Uh, okay, that, and the, the last thing is just our Facebook page. So, yes, we finally created one, so if you haven't found it, please find it, like it, share it, check it. We're trying to do much better about sharing what's going on through there. Um, the high school, I know a lot of them tweeting and all that fancy stuff, but I don't wanna do that, so, yeah, Facebook page. All right, if they have any questions about anything, or any of the projects, we are super proud of our health council kids though. They are amazing. They're amazing. I cannot wait. If you, like, please come back and hear them, because we don't talk, and they do, and they're really cute. They got to present in our state conference last week, so that's... I don't have anything else. Tell us.
Just keep on the work.
I was gonna say, we're really proud, and, and like Troy said, what y'all do may not be doing the academics per se, but it makes a difference, and, you know, it's changing their lives, so I appreciate what y'all are doing today.
Thank y'all very much.
I wanna say that, you know, again, I know Cia's already left, but Cia made this comment today about her Beta Club, uh, and I say echo the same thing for our Coordinated School Health and Family Resource. Chester County schools are known in the state because of the exceptional work that's done, not just with Beta's, uh, but with resources like this, I've listened to other, uh, states talking about what they wish that, like Tennessee has with Coordinated School Health and Family Resource Center, and then other states wishing to mimic the structure that we have in our state, but then, within our state, our Chester County Schools, Coordinated School Health and Family Resource Center is heads and shoulders above friends, and it's because of the work of these places. How many of them, how many of us can get out with a pressure washer to get that building clean? I mean, it's the, it's the extra things that are done, and we appreciate it, truly do.
All right, our next part of our celebration is gonna be honoring Dr. Kim Scott. I think Troy's got a few things you'd like to say.
It's roast time, is that right? Other than her love for Alabama, which we'll just set aside. I'm just really proud, no, I'm joking, Alabama's a good football program, can't help but love the winner. Uh, but, um, I had the opportunity, every year you have the opportunity, and you recognize a, an administrator for principal of the year, and again, it's not something that you just do because it's a routine. You wanna do it because it's, what they do is exceptional, and it helps the fact that this past school year, uh, because of the work that was done last spring, that, uh, East Chester students, along with staff and leadership, were able to be recognized as a reward school, and that's not, it was not an easy accomplishment, because they had changed the rules from what it was previously to a new accountability measure. But East Chester, as you saw in your packet, a picture of, uh, of her and Renee holding the banner, that's now proudly flying in, in East Chester. Uh, as I reflected on your years of experience, of course, again, she warms my heart, because she was my baby, my oldest baby, she's kindergarten teacher and first grade teacher. Fortunately, Sherry and John convinced her to leave, so I got a chance to have her twice for Kate, and, um, and I remember at a making music event, when they had asked you to consider being a principal, that you and I had talked, and, uh, I knew that she would do an exceptionally good job, and she has. Um, all you have to do is go to the school, obviously, you look around, and if I said, "Everybody representing East Chester, please raise your hand," that'd be most of us, there you go. Oh, you all there. Thanks, we gotta get that, everybody at once, here's here for, for Kim.
Ricky, I don't think you got that kind of fan base.
Well, that's all, I agree, but again, I know from my conversations with Kim on a routine basis, when we visit, talk about educational things going on, I, I wish to say that I can share something insightful, that is something she hadn't heard of before, but by the time I'm saying, "Why don't you get this book, I already read it?" You know, it's that kind of thing, she's always ahead, I call her, you know, jokingly, SEAL Team Six, it's kind of like, that's the front team, that when you got some new incentive, you put East Chester in it first, because they're the ones who, who will charge ahead and, and, uh, face the challenges of the day and, and do exceptionally well. All of our schools are exceptional. I know academically, we've got room for improvement in all of them, but, uh, I did wanna recognize Kim as principal of the year for this 1920 school year. Uh, I don't know how many other from the Southwest Core have been nominated, but soon, this month, or, uh, in June, is when they will, if, if she will be recognized as a Southwest Core representative, that's when she will be notified for interviews, and, uh, I have no doubt that the work that she does daily, uh, stands out among others, and, um, I'm very complimentary of not only her work, but all of our administrators, but right now, we're gonna, um, single out Kim for this honor, 'cause she sets the mark, she sets the pace for all of us to hope to emulate. You wanna say anything, Kim?
Not really. But I will say, it, you know, I don't do it by myself, I have a tremendous faculty and staff, 503 precious children, um, and I love 'em, or, they would be very hard sometimes, but, uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome. She's taking y'all out for ice cream back there.
We get our jeans for...
For tomorrow, good try, right? You should've heard better, you should've read the fine press. Fantastic.
Congratulations, Kim, great school, thank you for all you do. Uh, the next thing we'll look at is gonna be the tuition review, and that's for our students who have accounting, and I believe, recommending that this time we keep it the same, which is 600 for a student, or 900 for a board.
I'll make a motion, we maintain the same rate?
I'll have a motion, same, we're paying the same rate, in the other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proves no, and that will be approved. Uh, the next thing is, what's gonna look at is the ground fees and, uh, facilities. Uh, you and Troy have good talk, that, since we are doing explanations, would we like to just wait till later to discuss or decide if we wanna change our things?
At the time, I'd say like...
Let's just...
I mean, plus we need to put the cafeteria dish and the high school ready to...
The wood is kind of table, they wait till it's more, stuff more done, do a little sad, go to get the raise, and Shane can tell us how much we need to charge that. Wonderful auditorium he's got going.
So, the color of the fall just...
Well, I have not heard any negative about it. Shane and I have lived there for the last week and a half, it's ain't polite, um, but I've had very good feedback from just the general population, and again, as you see from your board package, Rick was very instrumental, we got bed opening scheduled at the end of this month, on April the 26th, for new seating. You've had an opportunity to see, we moved it in another room, but if you'd like to see the seating that you may have not seen yet, it's available still in the building, and then also for flooring. We're also gonna do the ceilings, uh, paint those a flat black, so it makes it more theater-like in presentation, but, uh, I'm telling you, if you had an opportunity, and I say it, I guess I can say it with, uh, 'cause Shane can also echo, um, last weekend's production of The New Seas was phenomenal. That's one of those things that just stood out, and to me, it'll be always memorable, not just because our kids were in it, but just on Monday, the very night, last night of the show, at five presentations, at standing room only crowds, on the last night, on a Monday night, but it was, it was such a phenomenal turnout, and I've mentioned it to some of the high school staff, that it was like, um, it was like winning the state championship. I mean, that type of just fanfare and support, those are the things, outside of athletics, that really you can rally your community to support, and, and I believe that as we continue to grow in, in the improvement of Williams Auditorium, the more utility we're gonna see in bringing that community together.
We got a message from the head of the Union University Theater Department, he's a friend of ours, he said it's the best high school production he's ever seen, and he's seen me right now. It's pretty awesome.
But Mary Higgs is the drama teacher, Dr. Catlett hired her, it's a good hire, Rick. So, uh, she's been exceptional, she got a exceptional bunch of other staff to work with her, and, uh, again, I was gonna let them catch their breath, uh, 'cause Kayla was in it, and, uh, um, Peyton was in it too, so, again, they, they just now get to where they're getting the rest back, 'cause it was a lot of work, a lot of time. Presley was in it, so, again, it's an exceptional, exceptional show.
Any other updates anyone's got a question about? If not, our next meeting will be on May the 23rd, here at our board office.
Um, I was contacting the quarterback club, and everybody who's been, been a host sponsor, like we've been doing, $17 per board member.
All right. I think we can all probably agree to that. She don't let the horse...
You don't have to add permission for it.
All right, the board, anybody have anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll speak to you.
Second.
I'll speak.
All right, we all had a motion, and all things to add?
Aye.
These adjourn.